...to order Chairman Boyd to not be here tonight if he had other obligations, so I'll be leaving in a meeting. Um, Tracey Warren, do you have, um, the first guest of Chairman Boyd, Vice Chairman Harrison, present? Ms. Teresa Henry, present? Ms. Kelly Hale, present? Mr. Matt Wright, present? Superintendent Moore, present? All right, um, Teresa Henry, do you have someone to lead us tonight?
We do. Uh, we have Mr. Paul McDay. Uh, he is coming tonight. Uh, the normal minister wife has P D stone, so he's volunteered to come in in his place. Uh, they're from the Refuge Church, and he's gonna lead us in prayer tonight, and also with a pledge. The Lord is standing.
Father God, we thank you again for this opportunity for residents of this community to meet, and to discuss things that you have stewarded with. Holy Spirit, we ask that you, uh, that you guide this discussion tonight. You guide the decisions that are made, and we hope that everything that is done here, Father, brings glory to you. Uh, we thank you for your Son, Jesus. We thank you for the identities that we've been given in him, not first as, uh, school board members and residents, but as children of the King. So, Father God, we ask that you, uh, that you meet with this group tonight. Father, we ask that everything that's done brings glory to you. Your name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, we have a request for our public comment to be moved after, uh, the presentations on the capital improvement plan with the more headed public objection to the public comment.
Okay. And I clarify, if anybody would like to make a public comment, Linda Milhouse over here has the comment cards. If you would like to make a comment prior to the meeting, a general comment, uh, that would certainly be in order, but as we said, we'll take comments on the capital improvement plan portion right after that, just as Harrison said.
Um, Ms. Teresa Henry, Ms. Henry, please, let's get to our agenda.
Yes, uh, the first item on the agenda for this work session is the approval of the meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Or?
No issues. Um, can we go ahead and have that get started on the next one? Next item?
Okay, uh, next is public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment generally on something that does not relate to the capital improvement plan?
No, no public comment? Next item?
All right, next is our reports section, and, uh, first is the chairman's report.
He's lying, and it's always the way for annual decision. I can give it to him.
Terrific. Next is our T L N representative update from Matt Wright.
No update this morning.
Okay. Next is our Arlington Community Schools Board Liaison update from Teresa Henry.
Yes, uh, they had a meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, and the chairman asked Mr. Buckle, which is their Director of Curriculum and Accountability, uh, to put together a class for submission to the T S B A. Uh, this will be used for their, um, annual conference that's in the fall. It's for consideration, um, to have a clinic that they would lead, and, um, Ms. Emily Lane would be leading that clinic. And the title of the clinic is Unleash Your School Superpower Teacher Team. So, they've submitted that to the T S B A, and I'm worried, um, if you're back for them, it's going to be a real lot. And I think I just want to say, that's great for Arlington and their school system, because it's putting their name out there, you know, throughout the state of Tennessee. So, congratulations on that. Um, their superintendent's report, uh, Ms. Mason has created a district teacher leadership team, and some of the requirements she required from the principals of their different schools will be a communicator of peer respect, that they're a level three, four, or five teacher, have good problem-solving skills. And I've listed the different schools and the teachers, uh, that were submitted from the principals and, um, through the Employee Education Association, uh, that will be, um, taking seats on, on that team as well. What that team's gonna do is come back as a district level and go back to the schools, what the district wants, uh, these of the schools to do, and then bring stuff back from the schools, back to the district level. So, it's kind of an intermarried, an intermediate level of, of communication that we're all role plays for the schools. Uh, their nutrition, uh, they had great report there that all four schools were showing their profit in April. Um, see, really, other than that, uh, there's got a whole lot of details to it. Differential play plan they approved, refinishing of the high school junior floor, H V A C for the elementary school, um, the high school level, repaving the bus lane, and the purchase of the Ford van, uh, for the maintenance operations, those were all approved.
Thank you. Ms. Henry, um, Superintendent, do you have a report?
I do have a report. I'll save my financial report that I use to do for the board meeting, but I will go ahead and get my, uh, regular superintendent report. First of all, it's, I just have to note, listening to the Arlington Community Schools agenda and looking at our agenda, I just think we have to take a moment and say what a difference a year makes. Uh, we were all scrambling this time last year just to do, uh, Kay Williams nodding ahead, just to make sure we could get done the miniscule, you know, minutia of the things we needed to do, just open the doors and make sure we had electricity and, uh, soap and, uh, towels and books and everything else, just right down to the detail. So, it's, uh, it's great to see the, the things that are allowing us to kind of move forward and do some things, uh, as Ms. Henry said, just to start thinking about the benefit, move beyond operational and aspirational. And to start my report, I just had to note, uh, what a wonderful end we had for our first year at, uh, elementary school. Didn't get the opportunity to look at the video that the, uh, teachers put together to the tune of celebrate. Um, there's not all good dancing, but there is some good dancing. Uh, but it is all from a place of sincerity and excitement and enthusiasm. They were really excited to wrap up the year, and as they said at the end of the video, we rocked it. And, uh, our teachers did rock it, and our administrators rocked it. I want to point out, uh, Teresa Lockhart, our great first-year principal. (Applause). An amazing job, uh, you know, the, the culture there and the morale right now. The teachers left on a good note. They're excited. I've had about, uh, six different people tell me that the last week of school, the teachers were sitting in circles in the hall, planning for their pacing guides and their, uh, curriculum for next year. So, it's just right, right where you want them to be. So, just couldn't be any prouder of that school and, uh, and those individuals. Uh, that being said, I did want to give a brief update. This has been covered in the media, but, um, we did get our quick scores back, which is the part where the, uh, state gives us, they're supposed to give us the grade that we use to assign to students. And typically, there is a significant correlation between that and what winds up being the levels of proficient and advanced, which is kind of how the state, you know, I guess, evaluates, uh, what, what kind of job the teachers are doing and the schools are doing, and the school systems are doing. Um, this year, they changed the, uh, the methodology that they used to designate the quick scores, and what they're telling us now is that it's probably not going to correlate as, uh, as closely as it has in the past. So, I just admittedly, some frustration there, because that was not, as they, the state says, not widely communicated to the districts. However, we do feel confident that, uh, our students and teachers did a great job. We've seen their raw scores and feel very good about what it looks like, um, we're gonna come out. As, and, uh, as I think everybody knows, and we're lucky to be, um, you know, in this category, our students have traditionally done very well, which means that the bar gets set higher and higher every year on what those scores have to be. So, uh, you know, we certainly, there's our share of keeping our fingers crossed to make sure we beat that very high bar, but we feel, we feel great about what the teachers and what the kids did this year. Um, today, at Lakeland Elementary, you went there, you saw camp intervention starting, kindergarten camp starting, our extended school year starting, which we didn't do last year. Uh, that was under Shelby County Schools, that's for our special, some of our special needs students. Uh, classrooms are being waxed already. Goodwill's working very hard, and, uh, we've got one hall almost all the way done, and it looks great. So, a very busy, very busy time. Lots of people used to say to, when I was principal, "What do you guys do all summer?" There's a lot, a lot going on at Lakeland Elementary. Uh, just an H R update, we currently have one special ed physician open and one regular ed physician to fill. Uh, we've hired a part-time school psychologist that we're very excited about. Uh, he's done a lot of work with the state, is very familiar with the state, um, intervention process, um, and, and the two teachers we've hired already, we're, we're just thrilled about. Uh, we will post for the before-after-school care director position and cafeteria monitors this week, and, uh, we expect to, to hire, uh, post those as well as the sped position. Uh, the before-and-after-school care program is really coming together. Trudy Hughes has taken the lead on that, and is working with the state. It requires both local and state approval, and she's checking off those boxes. It's something that's definitely manageable, and, uh, we would definitely have the specific information out, certainly by the end of this month, but we think probably in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the, uh, the times will be the same as we had with light care and, uh, actually some of the, the, uh, the fees and things will be comparable during the change at all. So, we're kind of just checking off those boxes now. Uh, Juanita Tyrell, our technology specialist, is providing numerous opportunities for technology training, um, professional development this summer, and has had a great response for that, as we keep trying to build the capacity, uh, for the devices that we continue to bring to the schools, and they're kind of closer to a bring-your-in device, uh, program. So, she's really working hard to make sure the teachers are aware of that. And, uh, we finally got all the paperwork in for the teacher laptops, so those, uh, that delivery is being scheduled. And I want to again thank Chris Patterson's office, our attorney, um, and his staff, Eric Jay in particular, for their hard work in, in making that happen. So, we, we hope and expect that it goes in for the start school. It took a lot of work that Juanita has to do to make that happen, so, uh, that's our hope. Um, Ms. Lockhart is also providing opportunities in the building for grade-level collaboration. Uh, the teachers actually requested access to the building. They said, "Can we," which does not always happen, basically, uh, "can we get some, can we have some days where we come up there and work together and collaborate and work ahead for next year?" So, again, that culture of improvement has really taken hold, and, uh, we're grateful and excited about that. Um, just wanted to give a one financial update. Uh, we are in a position, as you may remember, we initially requested a $2 million loan from the city for startup costs, with the, uh, the intention of paying that back at the end of this year. We only drew down $1 million of that, and, uh, we are in a position with our reserve to be able to pay that back in full at the end of this year. We are going to borrow, we're going to request, rather, uh, $300,000 from the city this year. And that mainly has to do with the lag between when the state money comes in. Uh, we don't get state money during the summer. Uh, we start getting that in August, and yet the payroll starts, a few payrolls before we start getting the serious state money. So, the goal is to build up enough of a reserve where we don't have to borrow any money, and that's where we'd anticipate being, but we're gonna go from a billion to 300,000 to hopefully zero next year. Um, and in fact, 300,000 is really just, uh, just so we don't have the credit, the credit too close, but that's, uh, that's the plan for that with that. Um, and we're also gonna begin processing shared residency, uh, immediately this week. That will be handled in Ms. Milhouse's office, um, and we will post notice tomorrow for parents to begin coming in and registering their students that they're in a position of, uh, of living with someone else who lives in Lakeland. Uh, there are, obviously, our policy is proceeded to allow for that in those situations. Um, and that concludes my report. Are there any, any questions?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Did memory serve me, though, in our policy that allows employees to, uh, I wonder if anybody's taken advantage of that, or, in fact, they might take advantage of enrolling?
Well, what we added was a policy that said employees of the city of Lakeland could enroll their children, and at this point, we haven't had anybody in that department category.
Mr. Superintendent, on shared residency, is there any reason why we're waiting instead of letting them register during a normal registration?
Mainly just because those situations change. We want to make sure that as a current shared resident, if we've done it in the spring and we've had several months that go by, it allows us to keep a more accurate kind of, uh, update, but we do have to check the pres- proofs of residence, and we have to get an affidavit from, uh, the folks that they live with. Sometimes those situations change, because people find, you know, a permanent place to live, and they move out, and so we found that, um, just as Shelby County Schools experienced, the closer we kind of get to the day of opening school, um, the, the less redoing you have to do.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right, next item?
Okay, we're gonna now move into, uh, our discussion items. Just as a reminder to everybody, this is a work session, so there will not be any votes tonight, but this is the, uh, the opportunity for the board to take in the information and, um, and discuss it, and then the actual votes, uh, that will sit in place, um, at our meeting, which this month, due to, uh, vacation conflicts and other things, will be Wednesday. Uh, so our first item is an update from Southern Educational Strategies on our school site purchase, from Dr. Jeff Mitchell. My colleague, Dr. Pike, is here as well, from S D S.
(Inaudible) But, uh, Vice Chairman, and members of the board, and Superintendent, Dr. Pike, my colleague and partner in Southern Educational Strategies, delighted to be here with you tonight. Uh, let me also start by saying, Dr. Harlow, the talk flight, I used to get those same questions, "What are you doing in the summer?" Most people don't understand that it's one of the busier times of the year for you and for anybody else who's working at the school, including the principal. There are so many things that happen during the summer months in order to have a smooth opening to a school year. And so, anyone who thinks that, uh, teachers or anybody else in the school system just gets a vacation, simply not true. Second thing I would share with you is that congratulations also on a great first year. Uh, that's a tribute to you and your forward hard work, and to your leaders at your school, and to your staff and the teachers there. So, I commend you, and I commend my colleague from Arlington, okay, there she is, uh, longtime colleague from the former Shelby County Schools, uh, and the work that they've done too. And Dr. Pike and I would tell you that although there were some people, a little more than a year ago, who said, "This can't be done," you proved it, and all, as well as the other six municipal districts. So, we would congratulate you. You succeeded in your organization, you succeeded, uh, in your financial management, as the other districts have, and I'm certainly pleased to be here and say, "We, Dr. Pike and I never had any doubt that you proved them right." Uh, tonight, I just came to tell you that the due diligence studies on the 94-acre proposed site for a school in Lakeland have been completed, and I'm pleased to tell you that, um, the site does appear to be acceptable for the construction of the school. The next step in the process is that the attorneys who represented you during the due diligence period and the contract with the property owners had been notified that the due diligence phase is complete, the property does appear to be acceptable to build the school on. And we've asked the attorneys to go ahead and notify all the property owners, that the next step in the process will be the beginning of a time to discuss the development of a sale and purchase agreement. So, that is where you stand in this process. Uh, you saw the book that we had last time, it's a pretty extensive book on due diligence. This is just my book on the work that's been done so far on, uh, a school project in Lakeland, and we are pleased that we've been able to assist you with that. I have given the superintendent letter that I spoke to at the last meeting. He does have that, and I'm sure he'll bring that to your attention a bit later on in the meeting. But unless you have a question for us about due diligence on the next step in the process, then that would go on for, on that part of the work.
Any questions for the board?
No, it's not like Ms. Priestman.
Thank you for all your hard work on that, that page.
Right. I'm glad you're here.
All right, the next item is discussion action on the revised L S S Capital Improvement Plan. Um, it's, certainly, I think everybody in this room knows, uh, this time last year, we started with a capital improvement plan that we set out to address, um, both the immediate need, um, that we felt like was imminent for Lakeland's school system, and in fact, a, a, a concern that came up even during the initial, in the local agreement, and that was the, uh, enrollment at Arlington Middle School. And, um, what we wound up coming up with was that, I certainly felt like, and how the board felt like, was a solution that would address both the immediate need of the middle school situation, but also a long-term need. We felt like that, uh, it was in the best interest of the students and the school system and, by extension, the city, to go ahead and move forward with a six through 12 school that we could go ahead and begin bringing all of our students in-house and, um, have more local decision-making over those students. We also felt like it was financially, um, in the school system and in the community's best interest. Um, I do want to say again, we, we still feel like that is the right plan for Lakeland. However, as we know, um, the funding mechanism for that plan was overwhelmingly turned down by, uh, the citizens of Lakeland. So, obviously, um, we have to take notice of that, and, as I've said before, certainly respect that, and that brings us to a different approach. Um, what it brings me back to, in terms of someone that was charged with coming up with an alternative plan, is a plan that in some ways brings us back to where we started, and that is addressing the situation at the middle school. And I do think an obvious, and I think a fair question is, why does that need to be addressed right now? And what I would say, I've said this to the board and just for the interest of the community, one of the major, um, interests that we have in addressing that aspect quickly is this land negotiation situation. Um, as, as you know, and I think everyone in the community knows, Southern Educational Strategies worked with the school board, um, and worked at some point with Renaissance Realty to take an assessment of what pieces of land would be available for a comprehensive middle and high school campus. Um, what we found was that there were some pieces available. Um, I will also say, what we found was, there was not an overwhelming choice of pieces of, uh, land available that would encompass a full high school campus. We're looking specifically for 70 acres. Um, in the meantime, we began the due diligence process on the piece of land that we felt like was the most appropriate for that eventual campus, and, um, had moved forward and found that it is an appropriate piece of land. The challenge that we get into is the contingency contract that we had with Rudolph Jones, uh, the Jones Gilling Group that owned the land, um, is kind of sensitive, it is time-specific. He is obviously aware of the results of the referendum, um, but also would like to know what are the plans for their land, and if there are plans. Um, I, I, I can tell you, I think it's fair to say, he's not as interested in just, he's not at all interested in just selling the land. He is interested in selling the land for a school site. And, uh, it was incumbent on us to be within the terms of the contract and start the negotiations once the due diligence was completed, to be able to say, "These are the plans that we have for the land, and we would still like to buy the land." Uh, I can say certainly, one of my concerns was that that piece of land would not become available, um, and that's whether or not the high school is built in 10, 12, 15, 20, 25 years. And before I start, um, the specifics of the presentation, I do want to say, um, in my mind, and this is as the result, you know, based on the results of the vote, this presentation is specific to a middle school. The presentation that I'm about to make is specific to a middle school. Uh, you will see plans for a future high school campus, but in my mind, part of this plan is continuing to work with Arlington and working under the assumption that Arlington High School is going to be our high school for the foreseeable future. Um, I've had questions come and say, "Are you gonna go ahead and try to do the high school anyway?" You know, "Are you gonna ignore the vote and just build a high school?" I can tell you from my perspective, and I, I think I speak to the board, that's not our intention right now. Our intention is to address the immediate concern, uh, which was brought up initially, uh, which is that Arlington High, Arlington Middle School currently has more students than it was built for. Um, I do want to say the, uh, I'll, I'll point these out. Uh, I would not presume to speak for, um, Tammy Mason, the superintendent, or for the school board, or for Arlington Community Schools, there are a couple of statements that we did come to as consensus, and they came, uh, directly, in, in one case, from the Arlington Community Schools Capital Improvement Plan. Um, but my continued hope is that moving forward, we continue to work with Arlington Community Schools and figure out, um, what are the needs at the high school level, and what are the projections at the high school level, and, uh, when might it be necessary, or one, or both school systems, to say, "We need a plan for the high school." But I, I do want to say, just in front of everybody, uh, that time is not now, based on the results of the, uh, just, just if there's any concern about that, or I want to be specific, something specific about that. Uh, so what I'm gonna do is share just, uh, the information that we put together, and there were a lot of people that worked on this, um, uh, they worked, again, fairly quickly, because we're on a bit of a constricted timeline due to the land considerations, um, but they worked very well, and we had a lot of data that we had because of the work we had done during the due diligence process the first time. A lot of those individuals are here, and, uh, we've got some, uh, gentlemen from, uh, say, don't introduce this, but we have representatives here from, uh, from Renaissance, uh, and, oh, that's right, I might, maybe it's here, you came in, for H U H, that worked very hard on this, and obviously, Dr. Mitchell and Dr. Pike, who have been involved, um, very early on. So, uh, what I'm going to do is pull up the part of the, um, presentation that relates to the capital improvement plan. Okay. in our minds that essentially contemplated Lakeland Prep, which was going to be a six through 12 school. I lost a bit of that, I apologize. Uh, this is actually from the Arlington Community Schools Capital Improvement Plan, uh, forgive me, that was supposed to say Arlington Middle School is operating at 96.3 utilization with portables and 109.4% utilization without portables. The current enrollment at Arlington Middle School is 1,211. Arlington Community Schools has identified optimal capacity as 90%. So, when they did their capital improvement plan, 90% is what they decided was the optimal capacity, which means this is really the, kind of, the max or ideal number of students that we would have. Um, again, this is something I've, I've sat down with Tammy Mason, and, you know, this is part of our capital improvement plan. There's not any disagreement here, certainly over what the status is at Arlington Middle, and that's kind of our starting point for our conversation. And we also got together with our shared planner, Nedra Jones, and talked about the projections for Arlington Middle School moving forward, and we did come to a consensus that, um, based on the projections by our shared planning specialist, that the enrollment of Arlington Middle will hover around 1,200 for the foreseeable future. And, um, the, the middle school enrollment right now is growing in Lakeland. Um, as Arlington Community Schools had said, they will have some students that phase out because their grandfathered in, uh, due to their, uh, open enrollment, not the open enrollment, grandfathered in from, uh, students that were from outside the zone initially. Um, but even with those, uh, even with those changes, it's still going to be around 1,200 for the, uh, for the foreseeable future, i- if you add up the Arlington students and the Lakeland students. All right, so what we're proposing, and we're proposing a plan that we feel like addresses both the middle school situation, but also concerns about future growth in our elementary school, is a five-through-eight middle school with a capacity of 900 students. This would allow us to pull the fifth grade from Lakeland Elementary and move it into a Lakeland Middle School, which would free up some room there. We have about 190 students that attend Donaldson Elementary right now, that live in Lakeland. Um, again, this is something that's been discussed, but, you know, our desire is to eventually bring those students back within Lakeland's school system, and this would allow us to do it, um, and it provides some additional room there. This would still be at an estimated date of completion of July 2018, and the other major assumption that needs to be made is that this plan was put together on the assumption that this middle school would be built on the Jones property. This proposal would look quite a bit different if it was just 15 acres somewhere closer to the road. This, this site is not. This site is in the middle of a wooded area. It is 94 acres and not 15 acres, and there's some significant infrastructure update that would have to be done to make sure that this site is not only acceptable for middle school, but also laid the groundwork for a future high school campus. And I want to say again, whenever that may be, whether that be now or in the future. We know the 94 acres, uh, has been offered to us at some point for a million dollars. That offer was made, uh, when we were speculating that we would have a full high school campus. Obviously, we still have to find out, and we're course in negotiation, in fact, it's still the price that would be offered, but we hope that the plans, um, that we have might, might lead us to still get the, uh, the land at that cost. The utilities to bring the electric, gas, and water, we had M L G W come out and give us an estimate, uh, working with, again, Southern Educational Strategies, on what that would cost to bring those utilities up to the site, and the estimate there is 1.1 million. And I want to say again, that is an investment into the land. That's an investment into the future of that site, but that investment has to be made whether or not you build a middle school or build a high school. There is private drive road instruction from Canada Road and Old Brown There is private drive road construction from Canada Road and Old Brownsville Road to the campus. This is an estimate that was based on work done by H2H engineers. That would be almost a million dollars, 995,648 dollars is part of that investment. All right, we actually put together a program of what this middle school might look like. So we got specific about what kinds of classrooms we would need to have in this building. We were able to use the most recent Shelby County School that was built, which was Collierville Middle School, to get a pretty firm idea. That opened, is it two years ago or three, two years ago, the Collierville Middle School opened. So we were able to use their program, that was done by, oh, three years ago, thank you, thank you. The guys from Renaissance worked on that project. So we came up with a campus, or I'm sorry, a building of 109,000, almost 110,000 square feet and $125 per foot. Just to compare and contrast, the Lakeland Prep project was about 262,000 square feet of the building there. So this is 110, close to 110. At $125 per foot, and that number was derived from the recent bid opening at West Haven Elementary. And actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that right?
Just had adjusted on what the cost of those adjusted for inflation.
The construction, contingency costs, it's typical to put in a budget like this because you never quite know what you're going to find specifically. But put some money in there for contingencies there. The architects and engineers fees at 4.75%, which is what's in the negotiating contract right now. And then the furniture fixtures and equipment list, this was based on, again, Collierville Middle School and their specific furniture fixtures and equipment, and this was also adjusted for inflation. And that bought the total to 19,991,000, yeah, just about 20 million for that campus. And let me say again, that price includes a fairly significant investment into the land, which would not necessarily be the case if we were just going to grab 15 acres and build a middle school and not think ahead to what a high school campus might need. All right, one of the questions that I asked specifically H2H and Renaissance to be able to answer, because if we could not answer this question, the whole idea of land negotiation and purchasing the land would be a moot point, is, is it possible to build a standalone middle school on this site and still have room for a full high school campus later? Because there was frankly some question about that. There are certain parts of the land that are appropriate for fields, that would not be appropriate for a building. So we wanted to make sure that those pieces of land, that we could function in designing a building this way. And I do have, for folks afterwards, excuse me, I have that slide here. So if anybody that wants to come up and take a look at it, certainly can. What this shows you is that basically we would be building the park here in purple, the driveway, and the roads coming in, and that's it. The rest of that is all future someday, again, 12, 15, 20, whenever it is that we can kind of agree upon. You know, with Arlington in my mind, when the case is that we need the full high school campus to be built in the interest of both school systems. This is not necessarily what the layout would be, but the exercise, as I understand it, from the architects and engineers is to demonstrate that it can fit. And they went beyond that and said, what might work well for this site? And actually, they came up with a concept that I'm really excited about. All the parts that are in color are the parts that would be built in this first phase and kind of right up to that hall there that would go into the middle school gym. The parts that are in white, that would be future growth if and when that part, you know, came to be. The part on this side, the classroom wing, is a two-story wing. Okay, we've got a library up here, administrative offices, your cafeteria, your middle school gym, your music rooms, the art rooms are located on the ground floor. That's what the second story would be like, a future building. We would anticipate a three-story building on that wing at the completion. But this is the only part we'd be right now, obviously. We wanted to get an idea of how these buildings might fit together and also get some idea of what type of architecture, you know, would you be able to afford? That's one of the questions I asked, you know, on this kind of budget, what kind of building would this look like? And I want to, I do want to be clear on that. $20 million is a lot of money, I acknowledge that, but it's not, that is not a champagne budget for a middle school. One of the things that absolutely came out of the referendum for us is, we need to cut this back and make sure that this is something that's reasonable, that's cost-effective, and that's going to kind of meet that message that was put out there. However, we do feel like, and they were able to demonstrate this style of architecture as an example, might be an appropriate one, this is called Georgian Revival. Close to that, is that? And, but this is how the buildings might fit together. So again, we would only build this side here and then later, this is how this would fit in. So just a few visuals to kind of give some idea. And I also thought it was important to see how does this fit on the entirety of the campus that would be the future campus again, which is right out here. But you'd have the entry roads and the access to the building here and then the parking here in the building. And then in the back, this is where the future campus would be again, once we got to that point.
What about fields?
You can't really see it, these are the, you might have to look carefully if you look here. You've still got the same field that we had contemplated before. So this would be, here's your football stadium, this would be a football practice field most likely. This could be either a band practice field or a soccer field, softball, baseball, four additional practice fields, tennis courts.
Even for the middle school, for the middle?
Oh, I'm sorry, for the middle school, no, this is not. Now, you may be able to, depending on budget, you may be able to shape some fields, you know, where you could have middle school football or you could have soccer, but that's not part of the plan necessarily. There'd certainly be plenty of land for it.
So this is in case for the future building of high school, those designated for?
That's what this is designated for, yeah. Basically, again, in the land study, it's been determined that that would be appropriate placement for those in the future. And we did, we did talk about, you know, some middle school field-type things, but if we could get it in there in that budget, we would. And if not, we'd just have to figure out how to share with, you know, the city of Lakeland or like they do in other communities. We would have a, we would have a middle school gym, obviously. Great question. And that's basically the revised plan. That's the budget for us, that's the area that we're going for. A bit about the background, which in many cases is similar to where we started last year, but just pulling that back. So I'd like to start with, are there any questions or comments from the board?
I believe I read in the capital improvement plan for Arlington Community Schools, the 1,200 or the conversation about the 1,200 students, that's assuming no growth, correct?
Thank you, I got it. Okay, yes, the 1,200, the projections that Nedra Jones provided for us, that's based on what's called the birth cohort. So that has to do with the folks that are living in Lakeland for us, in Lakeland right now and in Arlington, when you talk about the combined 1,200. That's basically under the assumption that the people that live there and the kids that live there are the ones that are going to the school. It does not account for future growth or future buildings or people moving in and out. It's called a birth cohort where they are tracking the ages of the kids that are in Lakeland and Arlington and assuming that those kids continue to move through school, one year after another, what that looks like. There are some assumptions in there about, you know, the numbers of kids that will pull out, go to private school and, you know, things like that. That does not anticipate future growth.
That's no new neighborhoods, no new anything new or community.
Correct, that's a different calculation that Nedra would use to get this done.
There has been talk of that the contractors that Shelby County used to use, that they are no longer in business, that we would not be able to get those discount rates to build. Has there been any accommodations made in this budget when you're looking at the costs to build that would accommodate that?
I know Dr. Mitchell can answer that because he'd be working real closely with the former discount contractor.
I don't want to dispel anybody who's thinking about that. Members of the board, Dr. Bye and I, in our careers, I know we're old, but we've totaled up and we literally together have worked on more than 55, either new school construction, now school addition and renovation projects. Personally, have worked on more than 42 in my career. There are no contractors that give their work away. We did get very competitive bids from a variety of local general contractors. And it is correct that some of those local general contractors have now since gone out of business. Two that come to mind are Inland Construction Company and the second one, the Web Building Corporation. Both of those have been local contractors here for many, many years. But as businesses change, they decided they wanted to go do some other things and so those companies are not businesses. But there are still many good local general contractors that can provide competitive bids on a project like this. Did we take into account that some of the really competitive bids we used to get may not be there today? Yes, we did, yes, we did. But I would just say to you that if you have a good set of plans and a good set of architects and engineers, which you have on this project, I'd be surprised if you didn't get a good set of general contractors who would submit bids. How many bids you get, how competitive it is, a lot depends on what time of the year that is. And that's why we set an assessment that this assumes that you're going to get this project bid in about the next eight months, eight to nine months from now. Because folks' prices are going up, they're not going down. Nothing is going down in the construction work. As the economy in the United States starts to rebound and the building begins to pick up, you know what that does. And so anyone who thinks you're going to save money either on interest rates or in construction costs by waiting is wrong.
I have a question, one thing that Dr. Mitchell, you may get called back up. If I understood correctly, inflation was considered on the Cardigan project?
Yes.
Is that correct on the estimate? And how large is Cardigan, the middle school?
That building is about 114,000 square feet, designed for about 1,000 children. The building that's proposed here is about 110,000 square feet, designed for about 900 children.
I'll make a quick statement as well. It's odd that some people ask, fields, one of the first questions that I ask about as well. A lot of middle schools are starting to play football even this upcoming season, so that's something that we certainly want to take into consideration. One of the things that I was pleased about when I saw the original plan was still showing the master plan and the commitment to K-12, even though it's a two-phase approach, it still shows families that were committed to it. And that will happen in Lakeland at some point in the future, so I was excited about that. I understand the investment being made in utilities and the land. I think there's two reasons. I think it's a smart investment financially speaking, where we'll recoup that cost down the road. But again, it also kind of speaks to our commitment to K through 12 here in Lakeland and we're willing to make that investment to say one day that is going to happen. So I was excited about the plan, Dr. World, Dr. Mitchell, and probably everybody did a great job on it. Excited about it, we are, we've kind of come full circle, oddly enough. One week in the school cafeteria, almost exactly a year ago today, talking about this very thing. 12 months in on that particular project in those meetings, so great job getting this done.
Any further comments? So I know you and Mason have been talking. So has the talk been, I know, I know they, we had talked to them and told them that this was coming forward and to make sure that they're bored. Has the conversation started about, like, starting to look long-term in planning how that planning process will look for, you know, high school level? I know we've talked about the middle school age, have we, have you all started to lay out how that process will look?
Yeah, what we've, what I've talked about in previous board meetings and mentioned Ms. Mason as well, that this would, this would be a two-pronged approach, that we were going to put forth a plan for this, what we feel like is an immediate need. We, and so I'm not speaking to Ms. Mason, but we, on our school board, feel like is an immediate need. But also that, again, in consideration of the idea that Arlington High School is going to be our high school for the foreseeable future, I think it's really important that we kind of put our heads together when we look at projections and what kind of thresholds we might look at, that we kind of let both of us know or the other schools, individual school systems, know when is it appropriate to start having conversations about Arlington High School not being a care at high school. A lot of that's going to depend on growth and things like that. What I'm proposing and what I'm hoping to get to is that we as a board would engage, essentially in a variation of the five-year capital improvement plan that Arlington engaged in, that does involve feedback and input from different stakeholders. My hope is that members of the Arlington Community Schools team would actively participate in that and, you know, we're presenting as to who that would be, but that we would do that phase of it jointly. This phase of it was done, as I said, quickly and I tried to keep this, Mason, grasp of what our plans were, but, you know, this was not a joint plan. We did come to kind of agreement on some of the things that would be appropriate to share.
And so do you envision, or as y'all talk, take Lakeland in the next couple of months as far as that, that high school building and how that would shake?
Well, and again, I don't want to commit, I don't want to speak on her behalf or commit her to anything. That would be, that would be my hope. I know in any event, we can employ Nedra Jones to help us with both the short and the long-term planning. And we have discussed the possibility of having, you know, I feel like significant participation from Arlington.
I was saying that would also include the transition plan, if we're bringing any of our kids back into Lakeland and, you know, how that's going to work out as well.
That's something, if this comes to pass, that's, you know, as we've said before in the last phase, that's something that Ms. Mason and I would have to sit down so we could make recommendations to our board. And then it would be a matter of, you know, bringing those arrangements back to the boards and, you know, either getting feedback or being told to try again. And then it's going to come down to the renegotiation of the loading contract at whatever point that's appropriate.
I did have one more question, I apologize. And I may get feedback from SES on this. We're talking about an 5 through 8 at the middle school, which also solves the issue of being able to bring Donaldson kids back and having room at Lakeland Elementary without any additional further plans immediately. Lakeland Elementary, that's a true statement.
Yeah.
But Dr. Mitchell, what are your thoughts on doing 5th through 8 at a middle school level? Because I know that's not typically done here. I know all of Branch kind of has a different structure at their school system where they do like the primary and the secondary grades, but I was just curious to know what you think about.
Can I have one just to follow that? Because I looked this up, right now in Tennessee, there are 81 5 through 8s.
Really, 81?
81, it's actually. Not at all.
Yes, and it's a good question, and you're welcome, glad to ask it. And Dr. Paul, this is correct. I can tell you that during the time I served as superintendent, we had some of the students that were 4 through 8, some 5 through 8, some 6 through 8. 5 through 8 is not an unusual grade combination to have. Three weeks ago, I happened to be in Metro Nashville and went to visit one of the outstanding magnet middle schools in Metro Nashville. It's a 5 through 8 school, has about 850 children. Wonderful school, wonderful program. Talked to the principal about an hour, about the program, how it's working and how they've done successfully. So it's not an unusual grade consideration. It's a logical consideration in my professional opinion for Lakeland to consider as you move forward, to try to look to how you handle road at the elementary level without asking the community to spend money to enlarge Lakeland Elementary at this point. Again, providing a place that provides adequate space for your middle school grades. And 5 through 8 is not an unusual combination.
And if you want to add just, based on the projections that we had from Nedra Jones, if we were looking at the 2018 open, and if we were, this may not be how it would play out, but all the K through 4 students in Lakeland, including the Donaldson students in 2018, the K through 4 would be 808 students and the 5 through 8 would be 771 students. So again, it makes a significant difference in terms of Lakeland Elementary and staying below.
And that puts us at a good operating capacity as well, sort of sweet spot.
Yeah.
I believe we have two people that have cards.
If you've got a card, just go ahead and bring it. Yeah. And you can still fill them out.
All right. Our person we have is Stephanie Lefler.
Stephanie Lefler, 96060 Portico. Yeah, I'm, I'm frankly a little surprised at the speed we're going here. And Dr. Farrell, I'd like to ask you a couple of direct questions that if you don't address them today, I'd appreciate it if you put them in the future in our, in our next, on Wednesday. I was really excited when you started the joint needs assessment with, with Arlington. I believe honestly that the only way we can make sure that all of the kids in both, both systems, that we know when to build, what we need, all of that good stuff, that's only going to come from a joint needs assessment. I'm assuming, well, based on what you just said, we are no longer doing the joint needs assessment? The one that was started? Is that correct?
There has not been a, a start or even an announcement of a start of a joint needs assessment. I have discussed the two-pronged approach. It would be a short-term addressing of our middle school situation and my hope would be a long-term. But there has not been the start of a joint needs assessment.
Sorry, my mistake. I thought I understood ten minutes.
Let me clarify, this is public comment. And he can answer your questions that are all over the meeting, but this is fine for you to make whatever statement. So I don't want him, his question answering to take up your time.
Oh, that's fine. Then my second question would be, why are we spending so much on this giant piece of land if we need 15 acres for a middle school? And frankly, it could go anywhere. I mean, is it really necessarily that we have the high school someday attached to the middle school? I mean, I think a lot of people weren't crazy about that anyway. But why so fast and why on this line? Why are we not doing a true long, a true six to eight month planning session since everything has flipped because of the bonds? I'd like for you to address that because I think that, I think that the 60-40 vote said a lot more than, than we don't want the whole thing. I think we want to plan, all of us, together. We voted no. And I'm going to, I'm going to leave you some questions. You can read them and if you would, approach them at your next.
Sure. Um, thank you. Can I, I will say in terms of planning, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. I thought you were talking to me, so.
I was going to talk to everybody.
Okay, good.
Others may have that question. But again, this isn't really a Q and A kind of session, but I'm happy to address that. You know, the fact of the matter is, you know, we have been planning for, you know, about a year now. And it went back over a year because a year ago is when we brought forward the first plan, which was to address the middle school situation and try to alleviate that. So there was a significant amount of planning that went into that plan. Over the course of the year and just looking at this land, there has been planning and data and information that we've gathered that is, you know, that we have, is the only reason we've been able to so quickly have a backup plan. If we hadn't been working with architects and engineers and with Rudolph Jones and looking at the land and been working with Dr. Mitchell and Dr. Pike for so long, it wouldn't have been possible. The reason to say, why go ahead and do it on this piece of land? And I do think this is important to note because it is one of the reasons that we felt like this situation called, called for some haste. If we were to just grab 15 acres somewhere, which we could do, and I want to say again, we could do at less expense than we would be investing in this property. The fact of the matter is, we did not find very many properties that are going to be appropriate. And some of those had to do with, there's land or there's some sewage. Some of it had to do with, there's gas easements running under the land. And some of them had to do with, not only is the rough terrain, but there's terrible traffic access. It would be very inconvenient to parents. We feel like, I'm not going to say this is the only great piece of land that would be appropriate for high school, but we think by far it's the best piece of land. And we also feel like, you know, if you were to ask me directly, is Mr. Jones going to sell you this land if you don't plan to put a school on it? The answer in my mind is no. He is interested in having something very specific on this land and that's his school. And we feel like that that land is the best place for a future high school, again, whenever the case may be. The worst thing that could happen, we feel like in terms of future growth, is we grab 15 acres, put up a middle school, start sending kids there. In the meantime, this land gets developed, other land gets developed. We run out of places that are appropriate for a high school campus. And then comes an agreed upon need even between the two school systems that it's time for us to move forward with high school. We don't have a place to do it. So we feel like for the value of this land and what we're able to get, we feel like the investment is a good one. We think it's a wonderful place for a middle school campus. We think it's centrally located. We think it's going to have great access for students, both current and future. And that's the reason, to answer your question, why we are continuing to move forward on this piece of land. And we do feel like it's frankly, very frankly, I probably didn't mention, maybe shake his head at this. We think it's important in terms of the land negotiation, in terms of being able to get the land at the price that we want. We think it's important to have a plan in place as to what we're going to do.
I'll add one thing to that real quickly. I've just always been of the opinion as well that even when we look, 15 months ago, when we started looking at the pieces of land, I always came back at this piece of land and just said, for the future growth of Lakeland, it makes the most sense. How the future of the city is going to lay out, how the future of the students are going to develop. Everything kept coming back to, this is absolutely the best decision.
The next card I have in front of me is Ms. Nancy Hart.
Is that too long?
With my name and address, please.
Nancy Hart, 3822 Piper Bay Cove. I haven't heard anybody address how much money we have to start this school, let's just give you those. I knew that there were some people that weren't happy to have 7th and 8th grade in high school when now we're running, now we're running extended to 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. At what point would we put the 5th, you know, 5th grade back with the elementary kids? I had kind of a speech out, but this has changed in a little bit. My other understanding is, is that Mr. Jones, if we don't build the school, he probably won't sell us the project. Is that what I heard?
That's what I was, that's my, if you had asked. Yeah, you can.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's inappropriate to try to determine in this, this setting what the owners of any piece of property may do. What your board has intended and brought to you is a proposal for a new school on site that has been ground-proofed, if you want to use the word. Due diligence has been done, so it's acceptable to the site. What the owners may do is not appropriate for discussion here. It's not, don't know what they may do until your board and your executive committee sits down and talks about it. And I think it's unfair to them as property owners to speculate.
I know that when I go buy a piece of property, I want to know how much and is it for sale? And if they start putting a lot of contention into it, I'll walk away. And you are right, Matt, there is no property in Lakeland. There wasn't any in 2000 that was available for Arlington High School. And this is probably the only site that would ever, ever be available. But our idea was is can we, do we have the money to buy the land? Will it be free and clear? And then on top, so we could take, how much of the land? We can take almost a million dollars off of that 20, make it 19. And is, am I reading this correctly?
Well, basically.
I'm, I'm keeping a timer here and I really don't want the back and forth and there are time to make the public comments. So first question, do you want him like specifically to answer?
Oh, yeah, not now.
Yeah, if you would like, knowing, listening to him, so we can.
Right.
I just don't want all the time taken up with the back and forth.
I just have a couple of other things that I wanted to address. I kind of lost my train of thought there. Amendment to the budget, is there a copy of the budget that we can see today or is it all online?
The amendment to the school budget, it's all online.
All online?
Yeah.
That's a problem because my printer wouldn't.
I'm sorry.
So I gave you a copy and didn't give that. And then, let me look and see what my other thing was.
It's hard to wrap one for you.
I guess that's it. There was so much presented tonight. I think the land is appropriate to buy. I think we're a little early in jumping into building something.
Thank you.
The next part I have is Jeff Hicks. Just like the name, Matt, just for the record, please.
Jeff Hicks, 4894 Melwood. My, my comments are pretty simple and short. I just want to thank you guys. Kind of a heartfelt thanking from parents of children in Lakeland for all working here on their behalf. The plan looks awesome. I'm glad that at least the immediate need for middle school is being addressed. Though I know a lot of us really wish that it was the full meal deal in Lakeland Prep. And a lot of people stand up and say that there are four schools and I don't really sense that that in fact is true. And I'm glad to see that we're in fact moving forward. I do have one request though. Even though it's only going to be a middle school, I would love to maintain the name Lakeland Prep. That to me says that someday in the future that it's going to be the whole campus that we all want. Thank you.
The next part I have is Lou Melton. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
I can hear you.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you.
Just taking it.
Lou Melton, 9584 Time Point Drive. First of all, I'd like to say that I've lived here 26 years and I've read studies on Lakeland and 75% of Lakeland is undeveloped. So I realize there are certain properties available at certain times, but I find that an interesting statement that that's the only place and we have to jump on this property, you know, at this time. I feel like it's a case of being fixated on a particular property. But I saw Real State three years, so I kind of understand wanting to close a deal, but is it the best deal as well? You know, really that's the key here. The other thing that I'd like to address is I'm extremely disappointed that a thorough needs assessment with both communities was not completed. I feel like I've lived out here all this time, these kids went to school in Arlington and they have done excellent. The, the last graduating class, $30 million in scholarship. And you people don't even give them the decency to go talk to them about a joint needs assessment? You're just going to complain to your little school, come right on you here for $20 million? You start out at 50 and now you're 20. Sorry, I just, I find that appalling. I also find it like you have not done your job. You were elected to represent all of the people here. It has not been done, in my opinion. The decisions that you make affect Lakeland and Arlington. It affects the future generations of all of these kids. You know, it's not just about $20 million. The other thing I want to know is why are we, you know, Arlington agreed to spend their money to expand their middle school as early as next year? Why are we not going to take free money? That, that makes no sense at all.
I'm sorry. Your two minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you. And the next card I have is for John Brown. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
John Brown, 4046 Lockway East 20. I just want to say, first of all, the gentleman who said he definitely believe that a lot of people on the other side are for schools. I voted against the bond. I thought that the school was too big, too much money now. But I'm definitely for schools, so I'll be out there, know that from the very beginning, I was probably spoken to more public meetings than anybody else. And my position at all of them was basically what you'd have come to now. I've said all along that we have this, middle school is the immediate need. That's what we have to meet. And as far as the plan you presented, I think it's pretty good. Unfortunately, if you'd have done, stuck with that plan to begin with, you wouldn't have divided the city and you wouldn't have all this. I know that's water under the bridge now, but I hope that now the city can come back together and support this plan. I know some people on the other side are going to be upset with me probably for saying this, but like I said, it's been my position from the beginning. I just have one question about the preliminary plan for the school there. We've talked before about how I thought that any school that's built should be built with expansion in mind, not just that in the high school, but the middle school itself. The way it's designed there, it doesn't look like there's any room for expansion. If 10 years down the road, we have to expand the middle school. I think any design should have designed for an expansion where you can easily add another wing when you, when you need it. But other than that, I thank you for, for the compromised position you've come to.
The next part I have is for Jeremy Burnett. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Jeremy Burnett, 4020 Cannon Road. First of all, I just want to say I'm really excited. I have two children that I hope will go to this new school. And so I appreciate the efforts that you have gone through to get to this point. One of my concerns is that this issue has divided the city like no other city I've lived in. I've lived in Tennessee, I've lived in Nevada, and it has divided the city. It's divided me against my neighbors and on the street and online and Facebook. What we have to do in the future, so I have to wait to include everyone as we build this plan to come to a consensus. What I would like for the board to do is to this time consider, is we do public forums, as you do meetings, to make them a conversation and not a presentation. If you think. And again, I'm very excited about the time that you guys have together. Thank you.
The last part I have is Laura Jury. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Laura Jury. Address is 9276 Fletcher Trace Parkway. Had a speech prepared for this, but in lieu of everything that was presented here, I'm just going to scratch that and ask questions. I realize it's not a question to answer for a thing, but there's just a bit of medical. And I would really appreciate if I emailed my questions to you, if you got back to me.
Sure.
So here are my questions. There's almost $20 million that we are going to need for this school. Do we have a means to grow it or are we going to be going for another bond? The 55 cent tax that we have in place, are we going to be using that for the middle school? Once the middle school is built, are we going to be using that 55 cents to go into a trust for the future high school? After the high school is built and paid for, are we still going to be using that 55 cents to go into the high school for other programs? Or are we going to make it null and void and avoid the 55 cent tax? My next question is, I have four children, three are special needs, one is a very gifted child. Are we going to have plans for sports in the middle school? Debate clubs, drama, band, instruments, art clubs? A lot of the stuff that was on there, I couldn't see because I didn't have my contacts on. So I didn't know if it was a law community or not. But I know that if I state we need to have special needs programs, it's illegal for us not to. My question is, is there equipment for special needs children that goes beyond what the state provides for them? I know we have a lot that at Lakeland Elementary and I think that's phenomenal. And I would love to see that for Lakeland Middle and Lakeland High School or Lakeland Prep if we show it. So I would like to follow that. My second question, or my other brilliant question is, do we have teacher interests already to teach at these schools? Do we have teachers vying for positions at Lakeland Elementary? Is it going to be hard for us to find teachers who want to teach there being a brand new school and not knowing what we're getting into? Because I know when I go into a school, I usually go into the shell of my first and I'm going to take a deep dive in a deep end. And I'm wondering if we're going to have interest of good viable teachers, the kinds of teachers that we have at Lakeland Elementary School that make us proud to send our children parent. the kinds of teachers that we have at Lakeland Elementary School that make us proud to send our children parent. My second, another one of my questions, please. Will all these charts be available online if we do a review?
I know your time is up. So if you wouldn't mind just emailing them all of your questions, if you can get to full length, which I'll never be able to.
Okay, can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay. I know that we have a contract with Donaldson right now saying that we have, or with Arlington and saying that we have our Donaldson children there. If we pull them to go to the middle school, does that kind of jeopardize our contract with them for the high school that we have? Will we still send our children to high school there? And that's it. And I thank you all so much. I think the land is beautiful and I hope you guys will be prior.
I have a card for Justin Smith, but she listed to yield her time and would not give them time. So did you still want to speak? No more public comments? Any more cards? No more on that page?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just a second. Name and address for the record.
Wendy Sebastian, 10129 Oak Street Lane. I want to start by saying thank you for all of your hard work as a Lakeland Elementary parent. I've been very pleased with this past school year and I'm looking forward to the future. As far as Lakeland, as far as Arlington goes, I'm sorry. I think we have been very pleased. I don't think anybody here is saying anything bad about the education that our students have received at Arlington. And they have been good to us. However, they are receiving some benefits from having our children in their schools. And I believe that we have to start looking to the future of our school and that's what you guys have done tonight. I presented this middle school plan for us. So just wanted to thank you and I'm very excited about it.
This is my chairman. I want to try to address, and let me say, I am always, and I think even, I certainly hope folks on both sides of the issue will vouch for this. I try to be very receptive in terms of responding with answers to questions and data and email and just about anything that you need. So I'm happy to do that. My email address on the website is thorell@lakelandk12.org. And I can give you a corner to make that easier for you. I did want to address just a couple of things. We had some questions on the financing. Just in terms of the way this process will work is that if the board approves this plan at Wednesday's meeting, that would be the meeting where we do vote, this would then be submitted to the Board of Commissioners on Thursday in conjunction with their budget conversations. So it is our job, well, it's my job to make a recommendation to the school board that I feel like is in the best interest of our students and our school system. It's their job to either vote that up or down, or say try again, or say, you know, do this or add that. And then once that is submitted to the Board of Commissioners, at that point, it's the mayor and the commissioner's job to work with the city manager, who's here, Jim Atkinson, and the finance director to talk about options and possibilities for financing. And that's essentially what happened last time. And that's, as far as I know, that's the process that would take place this time. So the specific questions about financing would be on the Board of Commissioner's side. Not on the city's side, as to what that looks like. And I do want to say, just again, I want to reiterate, you will not hear me, you have not heard me, even when given the opportunity, because I don't think it's right, to say anything bad at all about Arlington Community Schools. We are very, very lucky, and I've said this many times, to have those schools for our students to attend. Any community should be so lucky and so proud. The flip side of that is, we've got a situation that, just in terms of the middle school situation specifically, both sides acknowledge that there needs to be some solution to that. As someone alluded, Arlington has proposed a building expansion that could be a solution that they would, in my understanding, they would put forth if there is no other solution from our side. So it's, you know, that's what we're here to address tonight. And that's what I'm trying to address, is that specific situation. But again, it is not a reflection on the quality of our Arlington community at all. And anybody who says that that's, certainly, I'll speak for myself, that says that's my opinion, they're not being honest. Because I haven't and would not say anything negative. In fact, I adore the people that we work with at Arlington Community Schools, including Kate Williams and Bernard. I'm sure I'd adore you if I knew you better.
I've got no intention of adoring you, Jen.
But I kind of just like, that works. So I didn't want to say those things. But any more specific questions, I'm happy to address via email or even meeting, if you want to come in and talk. You know, the parents are so happy at Lakeland Elementary, I don't have to have a lot of meetings with them. So if you want to come and talk to me about schools, you certainly can.
The board has any comments on this item? All right, next item, Mr. Richard Melton.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is discussion action on the amendment of the 2014-15 budget. The school board members, I told you at some point there'd be kind of a cleaning up of the budget. There's actually less cleaning up than I thought there might be. We did, I think, a pretty good job. We put the money where we needed to put it. Thank you to everybody that's leaving and came. There are a couple of things that I wanted to get under this budget here, and that would be the 14-15 budget here. The state allocated $38,987 for technology upgrades, basically with the intention, or with the requirement that so much of our assessment be done online. And so I have added that to the budget as revenue. That's the only item that I've added as revenue. It had taken that out of the budget in the technology area. And I've also taken out the $20,000 that I've proposed to you guys in previous meetings that we would take out to cover cafeteria deficits. I think the cafeteria deficit is going to wind up being about half that. I think it's going to be closer to the $10,000 range this year. But I'm going to go ahead and leave the $20,000. And something we did do actually was put in kind of seed money for the cafeteria and I put in $10,000 for this year's budget, sorry, next year's budget, as you know. And I think that would give us some comfortable revenue, if we wished to do. But those are basically the changes to the 14-15 budget that you see before you. It's the addition of the $38,987 and the $38,987 and the subtraction of the $10,000. So that is submitted for your discussion and recommended for your approval when we get there on the website.
The board have any discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none, can we put this on our regular agenda for what we said? Next item, please.
All right, the next item gets more specific on the technology upgrade. We, this is something that actually we've been talking about for, really since we started the school system, is making sure that we have the infrastructure. I think as everybody knows, our PTA has been extremely generous. The Lakeland Education Foundation has also been generous. The school itself has bought a number of laptops and devices to give students and teachers more access to online resources. And, you know, the advantage of that is it gives students those opportunities. One of the disadvantages is we've literally got situations where sometimes in a classroom, I'm told the teacher has to say, okay, everybody on this side of me, get online. Wave, wave, wave. Is everybody on? Is everybody on? Okay, now this side, just to make sure that we're not overloading the network. So this is a real opportunity to improve our infrastructure. The situation that we've got is we have a vendor that we would like to work with. They is very familiar to, and his product is very familiar to our shared network administrator that works out of Bartlett City Schools and who we share. I want to recognize TC Henry, which is Theresa Henry's husband, who came in and basically did a free expert assessment of our network and really was helpful in putting together what we need at Lakeland. But basically, Millington Municipal Schools did a, they did a full RFP bid process and selected central technologies for their vendor based on that bid. And state law allows us to purchase from that bid that's been through the state process. And so not only is this, I think, the vendor of the equipment that our network administrator is comfortable with, but it's also been vetted as an appropriate and fair price. So I'd like to read this resolution into the, into the record if I can. And this is what, this is specific what I've submitted. But school board members, I do have the Millington kind of contract here, RFP specifics here, and then what our proposal would be. And our proposal is actually for $43,607 is what it costs to upgrade our network in Lakeland. Now we put an airport in every single classroom. Right now they're in the halls covering several classrooms. And in addition to being older technology, so this really should fire things up around there. So this is the resolution. Whereas Lakeland School System has increased the number of devices requiring wireless internet access at Lakeland Elementary School. And whereas the LSS administration desires to continue to expand opportunities for students and teachers to access the internet for educational resources and experiences. And whereas the state of Tennessee now requires students to take state mandated assessments online. And whereas the state of Tennessee provided Lakeland School System with $38,987 to upgrade its technology infrastructure. And whereas Central Technologies Incorporated was the winner of a competitive bid process by Millington Municipal Schools for equipment and installation of systems that would meet the needs of Lakeland Elementary School. Whereas state law allows for school systems to bid off contracts that have been awarded under the state direct competitive bid processes. And whereas the shared network administrator utilized by Lakeland School System recommends the equipment provider that was selected by Millington Municipal Schools during their bid process. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education, Lakeland School System, Lakeland, Tennessee, the superintendent be authorized to expend an amount not to exceed $44,000 for Central Technologies Inc. to upgrade, I'm sorry, Central Technologies Inc. to upgrade the wireless network at Lakeland Elementary School during the summer of 2015. And that's what I'm submitting for your discussion. I would throw that too in there as well.
Any discussion, comment, or more?
Is there any additional equipment? Or is there any of the existing equipment going to be removed from Lakeland Elementary? And if so, what would happen with that equipment?
There were, there were several pieces that, again, based on both TCs, so Mr. Henry's and Scott Truitt, our network administrator, that would come out. But my understanding, if I remember correctly, Scott had plans for them that had to do with, I think there were things that, ways that he felt like they could still be used.
I just want to make sure that equipment either is used in Lakeland Elementary or if we build the middle school, can be put over to that school at that point.
Yes, yeah.
I don't want to see it leave the district.
No, I agree.
Or be disposed of appropriately.
Yes, it would either be, it would either be put out to the, say, over the state process or it would be kept by us.
The access points that they're installing, the drops that are the guy going to be, but they're called home run, drop feeds back to the central closet? Or I want to make sure that they're going to be utilized drops. That may not be a question.
It's not a question. Not a home run, I'm familiar with. I got my finger on it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah. So the members of the board know, my husband's an architectural engineer and that's what he does for a living. So this comes from listening to him over the 15-plus years we've been together, talk about it. So this is, and I did tell it, just for full disclosure, I did tell him when he did the assessment, I said, TC, I want to hear it. So.
And he was not compensated again?
Yeah, 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 he was not compensated by this. So any questions I have or my own questions, it's any questions I've learned from him over the years. That's the reason I'm asking these. If you could find out about the home runs, I do want to make sure that they are home runs going back to the apartment. And what, and the contract, it talked about response times, but it didn't say what the response times were.
Well, actually, this is, we're not, we're not paying for, I think this must be for maintenance, because this is not necessarily, this is not our contract. Our contract would be to install the equipment.
Okay, so that's all they're doing is installing the equipment. Is there any ongoing support for that or would that be through Scott Truitt?
That would be through Scott Truitt.
Okay, so there is nothing.
And that's one of the reasons he's the most comfortable with. I believe Millington is looking to bring some support in-house.
Are we purchasing any type of maintenance contracts on the equipment?
I'll have to look that up.
I see one thing, it's a one-year replacement. So I saw on the.
I can, I can get these questions answered if you want.
Right, okay. Yeah, find out about the maintenance on the equipment as well, please.
And can you also find out at the time about the warranty period? Is it just a standard device or warranty period? Or if there's any, if there's warranty potential?
It can be purchased. And so what that cost will be?
And I do have a question. Is this for installation even in the unused classroom? I mean, classrooms that we currently don't have student or classrooms in? Or is this just for installation into the classroom or primary?
This, no, this is every classroom.
How many classrooms? There's 78 of them, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. So I was wondering, off the top of my head, I was thinking that match.
What about the portals?
This would not go to portals.
They're still on dial-up.
It would take some, it would take some doing to get the portals up to speed, even with electricity and AC and what they would be to go, so.
And is this, is this also cover the computer labs, the connectivity needed, any additional that you can do in the library? Any of those? Because then we have computers in that area, just to make sure that it doesn't.
Most of those are hard wired. They may even get the air ports anyway. I can find it.
All right, if you will put this on our report, just a few more in a second, please. And next item, please.
All right, the next item, the more substantial budget that you got is this coming year budget, the 15-16 budget. And again, as I suggested, we would have to change the fact. The biggest one was we did get a bump in our BEP revenue to the tune of about $208,000 and what we're projecting to get from the state. Like I say, it's, anyway, the governor enhanced it. I mean, the school system's still in it anyway, but we did enhance the amount that we're getting from the BEP. And so essentially, what I've done is to, because we had already built in the step increases that, you know, we were going to take care of that regardless, but basically moved that money toward adding two additional teaching positions to the budget. One, we're already anticipating that we're going to need, just based on the way the students lay out. Unfortunately, when you divide the number of students by your student teacher ratio, it doesn't always come out clean in terms of how many we have, have teachers or quarter teachers. Sometimes it'll work better, but we're pretty sure we're going to need at least one. I wanted to add one more in there, just to add some cushion. Last year we could do that, and once we started getting more students than we anticipated last year, had to come back to you, so that was the reason for that. We did determine that we need one fewer, not fewer than we have now, but fewer than budgeted, special education paraprofessional. So that, there is a, that may obviously last by about $52,000 there. And then probably the biggest change to this budget is I am requesting and would like to add an accounting clerk position. This would not be an administrative position, but this would be essentially a clerical position. Somebody that would assist me as the CFO in day-to-day bank reconciliation and account maintenance and some of the Apex work. Also help with the federal programs, budgeting, monitoring, and supervision. And then also we're bringing in a significant amount of funds now. It will be another fund that will, you know, rival the cafeteria fund in terms of the core after-school program. So this individual would basically supervise the finances on that as well. So that is in addition to the, to the budget. And that position would be funded at $46,600. Double track, so that would be a full-time 12-month position. You know, we're hoping to put that out. If you guys approve this budget on Wednesday, then I would put it out on Thursday.
And the additional accountant keeper person, would that person report directly to you as far as CFO that would work with the director that we're anticipating for the core after-school theater? Your cafeteria, all those things, does it work through this financial record?
Yes, yes, we'll hand you, yes.
That also puts a different, another level of accountability in the checks and balances as well, would it not?
It does. That's something I mentioned. You know, right, right now, as the superintendent and the CFO, to be honest, sometimes I find myself approving things multiple times where it would be appropriate to have other people approving it. And just, I have a, you know. or it would be appropriate to have other people approving it, and just have, you know, additional layers there. We have distributed, just to be clear, we've distributed it as far as we can. You know, Linda Milhouse handles requisitions, Juve Carpenter does accounts payable and payroll. She would continue to do those things, but this would basically, again, add another layer below me. And also, I think, provide someone else with that knowledge base that would be in the organization. And frankly, hopefully allow me to focus more time on instruction and interests like that.
Then we can house that position here.
Yeah, our thought was, and I've talked with Jim Atkinson about that, if we're able to hire that person, we can put them in Linda's office. She's got a big office, and we could, we could put another person in there. And Linda would like to.
I want to be so much.
Well, and, you know, another question I think you might have talked about this before is that if, you know, if something happened to you where you were not available for any period of time, or a certain period of time, to have someone with the knowledge of all of those CFO type activities to make sure the school system can continue, a backup.
I agree, yeah. I think it would be appropriate to have somebody else with that, that day-to-day knowledge. Yeah, of what our budget looks like and how it works and where the money, kind of, where, yeah. Something magnetic may on the way out of the building.
That was not valid. The board have any more discussion on this item? All right, can you keep that on our regular agenda for a while? And the next item, please.
The next item is policy 1.103, board self-evaluation, that Ms. Harrison has requested be reviewed.
I'll pull it up just to make sure I'm clear. One of our policies that we previously adopted called for an annual board self-evaluation and completion of a board self-evaluation to then develop our future planning goals, how, you know, kind of direction or goals for our school district for the next year. So I wanted to start the process of studying either if we wanted to consider possibly at our next meeting a retreat date for July, if we want to do it through July or do it through a regular work session and board meeting, and to start the process of our board self-evaluation, and then lead into our goal establishment. So is there anyone who, no, I don't know if y'all want me to read the policy, I would not. But basically, it says that, that we will develop standards to evaluate ourselves and determine how effective we are as a board, and our goals, or that our responsibility is just the board members and as a school as a whole. And then, we would use those to then set our goals for both short-term and long-term. So is there anyone who has any objection to potential discussion on this in our work session? Is there any suggestion or thoughts on doing this at a regular meeting? I believe, in case we need all board members present, so it would need to be a meeting where, possibly July meeting or whatever it hurts, you know, we would set up a special retreat. So anyway, just some discuss, some thoughts for discussion before our meeting on Wednesday as to how we want to determine that evaluation process to be like.
Can you add that to our agenda, if anyone has any objections? Can you add that to our agenda, just discussion on potential date or how we want to handle the self-evaluation process? All right, the next item?
It is policy 1.403, agendas, also added by Ms. Harrison, policy washed off.
Yes, policy. Another item that is in the policy we adopted is creation of an annual agenda, and it's basically said that we'll carry out our goals and objectives, and also bark towards the state board of education performance standards. What isn't, I've looked at, like, Waytonson County, and I think some of the, even some of the other local municipal school districts have started setting annual agendas, or at least started the discussion on setting an annual agenda. And basically, what it is, is, you know, it's your timeline to make sure in August you have, you know, you know, all the things that you should be doing throughout your fiscal year to make sure your goals, objectives, requirements to the state, all of those are met. So with our fiscal year starting in July, I thought it'd be a great opportunity for us to look at establishing an annual agenda for this next fiscal year, and how we want to operate as a board, and to make sure we're meeting our objectives, meeting kind of our milestones that we intend to meet, and kind of how, what our timeline is going to, you know, some of the future planning of the next year, and kind of take an early look at that. So my thoughts were, if anyone would have any suggestions on items to add to the annual agenda, to bring them to the Wednesday meeting, and then we can have a discussion on it at the Wednesday meeting, and start creating at least a process for potential adoption of an annual agenda at the July 4th.
Any comments? No comments. All right, and that's all, that is all the items on our agenda. Anyone have any announcements?
Just a reminder that we're back here Wednesday night, unusual.
All right, with no further business, we are adjourned.